I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, December 11th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hammond, we have some items in the table file. Can you approve?
We do. We have several items in the table file. We have an updated component of the truth and taxation presentation. Included is the property tax levy and rate summary for taxes payable in 22 and or 2023 and 2024. So it's really more of a tax impact document that you've had in the past. We have several consent agenda items. And then we also have the follow-up documentation for the district's iPad bid and the purchase of the previous fleet of iPads. So we had a successful bid day on Friday, and we're going to ask you to approve that this evening.
Very good. Thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff, second by Jenny. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote? Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
He's on. Hope we can't hear her though.
I did see that too. Gonzalez George?
Hi.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Strat Moon?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. We'll now move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Did anyone sign up, Anita? Okay. Item four is announcements and recognition. Dr. Hammond, do you have anything for us?
I do. I have two items this evening. The first of which is just wanted to highlight the outstanding annual traditions concert that the Northfield High School Choirs performed this past weekend at Skinner Memorial Chapel on the campus of Carleton College. It's just one of my favorite school district events of the year. Just fantastic music, and we're really grateful for our partnership with Carleton that allows our vocal musicians to perform in this just really beautiful place. So a great concert, really fantastic. And then again, one of our six strategic commitments is to partnerships and the fact that we are able to use that just gorgeous facility for our musicians is a wonderful example of partnerships. So that's the first one. And then the second announcement this evening is I am so pleased to honor Board Chair Claudia Gonzalez George this evening. I recently learned from the Minnesota School Boards Association that Claudia has completed the Leadership Development Program. And so this is recognition when a board member completes all four phases of the MSBA Leadership Workshop Series. So I clandestinely have this certificate right below my laptop. And it just it is a completion certificate of all four levels of training. Of course, that's a commitment to be able to get all four phases of the MSBA Leadership Series. So we thank you for your public service, your commitment to board development, and a thank you for your leadership. So congratulations. We'll take a picture. So those are our announcements and recognitions for this evening.
Very good. Nice surprise. Okay, item five is our items for discussion and reports. First up is our truth in taxation presentation for the payable 2024 property tax levy and fiscal year 2023-2024. General fund budget revision follow will be followed by public comments. And we do have an additional document in the table file as described by Dr. Hammond earlier. Welcome, Val.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm going to go through our truth and taxation and talk about our final certified levy as well as our general fund budget and the recommended revisions for that. You can go to the next slide, Tim. So the levy cycle, just as a reminder, is a fairly extensive process that involves all the taxing jurisdictions, which includes Northfield Public Schools. The counties, Northfield resides in three counties, which makes it an extra fun challenge. We have the bulk of our property in Rice County, but we also have some in Dakota and Goodview. And so in the spring, all of the determinations are sent out for your home value. And then in September, the board certified a preliminary levy, which the counties then take and put on your November statement for your proposed taxes for the next year. And then we come back and do a final certified levy, which is what we're doing tonight. And then once that final certified levy is then given to the counties, then they can issue the final statements for your property taxes for the next year. Minnesota does have one of the most complex property tax systems in the country. There's over 40 different property classifications and some very interesting formulas to get to all the numbers, but hopefully we will break it down as much as we can tonight to help you make sense of it. You can go to the next slide. MDE, actually go one more. MDE is the regulator for the school districts levy formulas. And so we do not have the same authority that the counties and the cities have in terms of setting their levy. It's highly regulated. The statute drives most of it. About 60% of the formulas are enrollment driven. With those calculations being set in statute and enrollment really being the driver of those. There's a very small percentage of formulas that we do have some control over, but it's pretty limited. So just know that it's very regulated and the state really is driving what we can and cannot levy for. Go to the next slide. It's going to take me a while to get used to doing that. So property tax changes, there are several factors that can play into the number that you see on your final tax statement. Obviously, the amount the school districts levying as well as the amounts, all of the other taxing jurisdictions levy are going to drive into that. Your market value or if your property changed classifications from residential to industrial or any of the other 40 classifications that there is. Something to note specifically for Rice County this year or for the Northfield Public Schools tax base, I should say. Our market value, they look at it historically so that we have complete data. So for 2022, the market value for Northfield Public Schools taxing jurisdiction increased 15.6%. As you can see, that's pretty substantial comparatively to what we've seen the last several years. That obviously aligns with some of the things we've seen in the community with increasing values. So that is a pretty big jump that plays into the numbers as well. You can go to the next slide. So what is the levy? The levy is local taxpayer dollars that support about 25% of our general fund budget, which is a pretty significant portion. It also has some funding for community education as well as most of the revenue to pay our debt obligations. You can go to the next slide. So the summary overall, our levy authority is up about $810,000 or about 3.84%. The preliminary levy that was presented was 21,593,365, and there was a slight increase for the final of 21,946,253,35. Not to be too specific, but really, there's just some formula things that MDE was working through that tweaks slightly just to change that number. There was nothing the district changed in between the preliminary and final. It was just certifications from the state. You can go to the next slide. So of the 21.9 million, you can see that the referendum is 43.2. That makes up the largest portion. So that is our voter-approved operating referendum. We get it per student allocation. The general fund other is 31%. That is all of the state authorized levies, operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, things like that. Debt service is 15.2%. That is actually a smaller percentage than we've seen historically. That has declined each year that I've been in this position for the most part, and that is due to the middle school bond debt being paid off. So that is now a smaller piece of the puzzle. Capital is 8.7, and you'll notice that's a larger piece of the pie than in the past. And that is because this will be the first year that the increase to the voter-approved capital projects levy is included in this dollar amount. And that was about a 1 point, just shy of $1.2 million increase for the levy. And then community services is about 1.8. You can go to the next slide, Tim. And actually, you'll notice community education is a decrease of about 55,000, and that is not because they're getting less revenue. The legislature changed some of the formulas. And now in addition to levy, they're also going to get some state aid. So the state is going to chip in on some of that, which was previously all on the taxpayers. General fund, you can see is up 19.58% or $2.9 million. The vast majority of that is the increase for the capital projects levy. That was about 1.1. I have another slide that shows a little more detail in the general fund, so you can see the specifics. But that was nicely offset by a decrease in debt service. So netting that 810,000 increase rather than a $2 million increase. And so that balanced and the timing worked really well for that. And the debt service was a 38.7% decrease. The voter-approved, you can see, stayed pretty consistent at 13.7 last year, 13.6 this year. Again, the debt we paid off was voter-approved, and that was slightly more than the voter-approved capital projects levy increase. So that's why you see the decline there. But we are still looking at about 60% or so voter-approved, which is a great place to be. We know that our community is very supportive of education, and we're grateful for that. The bottom one, sorry, Tim, the bottom one is referendum market value and that tax capacity. And that's really just breaking out our market value in our taxing jurisdiction based on the different state formulas. So the referendum market value primarily drives the tax base for our operating referendum and not tax capacity is for the vast majority of the rest of the formulas. You can switch it now. So this is some more detail specifically on the general fund levy. So you can kind of see the different revenue sources that make up the general fund. The capital projects levy obviously jumps out at 1.1 million dollar increase over the prior year. The rest are mostly enrollment driven. This was the year that we had basically stable enrollment. Or we also have the inflationary factor on the referendum as well, which is part of that increase. The adjustments you'll see is also pretty substantial. And that is our total levy process is really like a five-year start-to-finish process. So we are certifying right now. It's revenue next year. But then there's three years after we complete that school year for them to clean up and make sure that we're getting trued up with any enrollment calculations or any other formulas or lease levy to make sure that the revenue we said we were going to get is what we actually spent. So all of those things can come basically over the following three years. So the 939 is primarily an enrollment catch-up from the pandemic. So are we estimated very conservatively during the pandemic because there was quite a bit of shifting of enrollment? And we weren't always 100% sure how it was going to shake out. We did, we fared better than we had anticipated, which is what's driving that large adjustment. And then again, community debt and debt service, we already talked about those, but that's really what makes up the 21.9 million or 3.84% increase. We'll go to the next slide. So this just shows our levy over the past five years. You can see it's been pretty consistent. It was actually a decrease in two of the five years, and our five-year average is about 1.8%. And so overall, we feel that's very responsible to the taxpayers. We are getting the maximum that we can allowed by law and still providing an excellent world-class education here in Northfield. You can go to the next one. Okay, so that's all the levy. Oh, I got to talk about the tax impact. In the table file, there was a tax impact document, very, very much the same as the one that you received in September. So on average, a $350,000 home will see approximately $130 per year decrease in their taxes or 6.4%. That is a little counterintuitive to most people because we have a 3.84% increase. It is not one for one. It is based on our taxable market value and the amount of our levy in addition to everything else. So basically, if your home value stayed the same, which it probably did not, but if it did, you would see roughly a 6% decrease in your taxes from the school district. If they did go up, you could see roughly a 6% increase in your market value and still be paying the same as you did last year for the school district portion of your taxes. But again, that is really subject to the growth in our tax base and being able to spread that $21 million over a larger number. So as part of the truth and taxation, we are required to talk about the budget. And so we have for several years taken the opportunity to actually just revise the general fund budget since we have to talk about it. You can go to the next slide. So the way, the way I see this, it works out really well right now. We now have our audited final information, which you heard at the last board meeting. Our October 1 enrollment is no longer production. We actually have students here and have been providing you enrollment updates. We have a settled contract with the Northfield Education Association. We have a better sense of our federal funding where it landed last year, how much carryover we have. Do we have any new grants this year, those sorts of things? And we have a sense of what's going on for health insurance for the coming year because that's on a calendar year cycle. You can go to the next one. So as you know, the largest driver in the general fund budget is enrollment. Makes up 70% of our revenue formulas. So I like to show it this way, showing what we had for 2223 for the adopted budget, what we revised it to, and then what actually happened. I think that's a good reflection to see, are we on the mark? Are we way off? What might be driving that? And I was super pleased because the revised budget estimate was actually incredibly close, like within seven students to what actually happened. That's good for the budget. It means that we're doing the right things. It also means that some of the transition things that we were experiencing from the pandemic have slowed down a little bit. So that is good for the future. It means we can hopefully better predict, assuming it continues to be on this trend. And based on our October 1 enrollment, I'm actually not recommending any changes to the enrollment estimate, which I think is the first time that's happened since I've been in this position. It appears to be, it was actually about seven students higher when I ran the numbers, and so I chose to just keep it conservative. The seven students doesn't dramatically impact the revenue overall, and so I chose to keep that the same. And so we'll see where that ends up this year, but hopefully it will be on a good enrollment projection trend at this point. You can go. Yep. Thank you. So for total revenue, you have three years of audit results. What was approved in June for the adopted budget? And then what I'm recommending for the revised budget today. So as was presented, the audit, we ended up with revenue and expenditures higher than we had originally budgeted. But that came out in the wash. For the most part, there was more revenue to support the additional expenditures. The adopted budget, while done in May, there was obviously a lot of things happening at the legislature. And so we included the 4% increase in the basic per pupil funding. But we had not included the increase in the cross-subsidy special education aid. That was a pretty substantial dollar amount. But that calculation is very different than 4% on the per-student formula. Because our special ed revenue is the lesser of three formulas. It's based on prior year expenditures. And so I wanted to wait until we had some really final solid data before I put that number in because it was significant. And so that increase was about 1.9 million. So that is the primary reason for the large jump. And you can see that in that state sources line. The federal, we are anticipating leaving the same. We spent most of the asset funding in fiscal '23, and so that should be pretty. We are spending down the last of the out-of-school time with the community school model that we are using or doing at the two other elementaries. And so that, all of the budget ended up being the same as what we were anticipating. Local sources you'll see has an increase some based on just historical revenue we've brought in. The bigger difference being the budget for the sale of the iPads, which actually came in better than I had projected in the budget, which was quite all right. I'd much rather be in that, on that side of it. So 62.9 million is the recommended revenue revision. You can go to the next slide. So expenditures, as you know, I like to show you by program and by object. So this is where we're spending the money. The next slide is what we're spending the money on. Again, some increases here, a couple of different things impacting that. Obviously, you're aware that our health insurance has been struggling, so we are having another I think it's seven, seven or 10% increase July 1, January 1, sorry. And so that is, we're, the district's contributing 5% of that based on the negotiated agreement. In addition, the settled contract had 6% on salaries in the first year, and so that was more heavy on the first year of the contract. So that's increasing salaries throughout several of those program codes. I'm trying to think. Those are the big changes that I noted. There were some transportation increases as well, just with where things landed last year. Making sure that we had a sufficient budget for what's projected this year. This is the first year in a while. I haven't adjusted the utilities budget, so that's a good place to be. But overall, 62.17 is the recommended expenditure budget. You can go to the next slide. So this is where we're spending the money. Obviously, we've talked about salary and benefits being 80% of our budget because we are a people business. We are here to do good things for kids. So 35.79 is the new salary projection. 14.1 for benefits. In addition to health insurance, there's a few other benefits that have been, I would say, becoming more popular. So there's more staff contributing to a 403B and getting their match and their contract and those sorts of things. Purchase services is where transportation lies. So that is one of the drivers for that increase. And I think those were the big ones. All the capital projects outlay stayed the same. There was no changes there. Really, salary and benefits was the big driver. So again, the same 62.17 million, just shown in different categories. You can go to the next slide. So this is the fund balance projection. So you can see in the adopted budget, we were projecting about a $1.2 million surplus. Still projecting a $786,000 surplus. However, the big difference is really that we ended 2223 not quite where we had projected. And that is primarily related to the subscription-based software GASB requirement. So we had been intentional with instructional services because most companies are requiring multi-year agreements for these types of software things. And we were expensing them. They want you to pay upfront, and then you have access to it for three to seven years, depending on the company. So we were expensing those in the years in which we're using them because otherwise having, you know, $100,000 out of your budget for something that's going to last five years was becoming pretty problematic. And so we had just gotten in a good place where we were being proactive and thoughtful and planning for that. And this GASB standard required us to expense it all in the year that we paid for it. So our capital fund balance took a pretty significant dip because we had not planned for that. We also have expenditures in '23, '24 that were already done in July when we have to renew subscriptions. So there's about $300,000 in '23, '24 that we're going to have to expense that we had not anticipated. So we were working through that and how to make sure that our, we have some ideas on how to keep our capital fund balance. I'm not super concerned about it. We obviously have the increase to the capital projects levy coming in fiscal '25, and so we'll be able to make sure that we're balanced there, but that was not quite anticipating the way we were going to have to implement that standard. And so that is why we ended at 12, 9 instead of what I had originally projected. And then that fund balance then rolls forward, obviously, to the '23, '24 budget. So 15.17 on the adopted budget is different than what you saw in June. And I just want to be super clear that that's because I rolled forward the fund balance and adjusted it. The what you saw in June was my estimate of what would happen in 2022, '23, and now we have the actual. So I roll it forward. So given that, and the changes that I put in with the revised budget, we're projecting to end at 14.14 at the end of this year, which is still above the board goal. I do think we'll still be fine. I'm obviously updating our financial projection now, which you'll see in January. I anticipate that we'll be able to keep that going for at least two more years, but I will present that in January. So that, I think, is there another slide or was that the last one? That's what I thought. That is the general fund. It's a lot of information between truth and taxation levy and budget. But I would welcome any questions. You want to do the public comment piece first? Okay.
Thanks, Val. Okay, if there are any Northfield School District taxpayers want to ask questions or make comments regarding the truth in taxation public hearing presentation for the Northfield Public School District, you may make yourself known to me. Yeah, I don't see anyone stepping up to, from the public to ask any questions or make any comments. So we can move on to any board members who have a question or comment for Val. Corey?
Thanks for the report on all three areas. I know it's a lot of fun to dig into those numbers. I have an easy question, I think, for you. I appreciate the explanation also, the standard changes. For those on the board who aren't as familiar with acronyms, can you share what GASB is?
Yes, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I like the softball questions. Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I'll put a little curve on that softball for you. Do, so how much at the end, so software is a subscription? How long was the subscription that we bought? And how much is the amount that we had to pay all upfront?
So we have multiple. There were four that were required to do the multi-year booking, and it ended up being last year about 193,000, I want to say. And then for '23, '24, it's just shy of, I think it's 293,000.
And examples of those would be?
Typically, they are instructional services, things like our SCL screener was a multi-year subscription. I'm totally blanking on them now, but some of our online textbook applications, there's at least one of those that is a multi-year. There's one other big one that I'm Renaissance. I can get them to you if you want all the specifics.
That's okay.
Okay.
One more question. When we look at the truth and taxation statement, the one that's kind of the blue and orange one in the table file.
Tax impact.
The tax impact.
Tax impact, thank you. Sorry. You know, we look at the makeup of the types of property. We've got residential, commercial, industrial, ag, homestead, non-homestead. Do you have a sense of how the distribution of the total taxable amount in the district kind of is the statewide level versus what it is here in Northfield? kind of is the statewide level versus what it is here in Northfield?
I I don't know the statewide, but I do know rough estimates for the local. So I know over fifty percent is residential here. And I believe less than seventeen percent is commercial. The other ones would be a guess on my part, so I won't commit to a number, but those those two have been pretty consistent over the last several years.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else comment or question? Jeff?
Thanks for your report. When is the levy up for reelection again?
The voter approved referendum? We passed that in twenty seventeen, so twenty twenty-seven.
So, okay. And then, do you know, I mean, we're asked, we have the max for what that is. And I mean, after there's three hundred and thirty-one school districts, do you know how many percent, I mean, why would you know that? But the percentage wise of how many actually ask for the max? I mean, we've had the max for a long time.
I do not know that. I can certainly try and figure it out, but do not have that off the top of my head.
I think it's fair to say it's not many.
Yeah, I would agree.
Thank you.
Amy, do you have any questions?
I believe she is.
Just a thank you to Val for an excellent presentation, clear and concise and easy to understand as always. Thank you, Val.
Thanks.
Very nice. Anyone else comment or question? Very good. Okay, thank you, Val.
Thanks.
Okay, item B is our policy committee recommendations, and Dr. Hellman will present the policy committee's recommended updates. The policies two oh three, four, four, one, five oh seven, nine oh two, and nine oh three. There, this will be an item for individual action at our next board meeting.
Yes, so we are now back mostly in bringing policies to you for your consideration, updates that have come through the policy committee that are on our regular scheduled review. One of the things that you'll notice in the items that are with you tonight is that from time to time, you'll see a policy like policy two oh three, for example. Policy two oh three is the operation and of the school board are bylaws. And you'll notice that we did update that policy last April. So we will update policies as there are legislative changes or other recommended changes from MSBA. But we still keep them on our regular planned review cycle just to ensure that we don't say, well, this policy got updated this year because of a statutory change or because of an MSBA recommendation, and then not come back to it for a long time. So even if we reviewed something recently, we keep it as part of the schedule. So the operation of the bylaws from for the board, these are the recommended changes from the policy committee. I think that they're fairly innocuous. There are things like just clarifying. One example is reviewing the progress of the strategic plan through the annual state of the district presentation, the state required a world's best workforce plan. We did make a change. It says, review the district vision statement and strategic plan annually, and really what best practice would say is a, or a common practice, I should say, is visioning and strategic planning is a five-year process. And so rather than saying we're going to change it every year, we want to be able to give staff in the community some surety that a plan is going to last for several years with progress reported each year. So those are some of the examples of the changes in two oh three. Clarifying some pieces that, for example, under officers, you could read it in a way where a person could only serve as an officer once. We just clarified that you could serve for multiple terms, multiple consecutive terms, things like that. Recommending, encouraging other positions on the board, in this case, the vice chair to complete phase three and four training, not requiring, but encouraging. So those are the kinds of changes that you're seeing in two oh three. When we take a look at the next one that's up for forty-one, this one was asked to be reviewed by our technology services department for a couple of reasons. So we accelerated this one. The reason for accelerating this one is including some up-to-date practices related to security and what employees are expected to do to secure their technology. In addition, we have had an unfortunate, a couple of unfortunate circumstances where one particular employee has had several, an example of one particular employee having several problems with their device being damaged several times. And so this would give the district the ability to charge an employee if there are multiple times where their district issued equipment was damaged and it was deemed to be through a lack of care or carelessness, things like that. So those are some examples from four forty-one of some of the changes. Again, adding security, allowing for some charging of charging staff if they have been careless in getting their device damaged multiple times. We're forgiving, but if it happens multiple times, we think there should be some accountability. Policy five oh seven, this is a recommended update from MSBA. This recommended update came out recently. And this is due to the attorney general, the two attorney general opinions related to the use of force by school resource officers. So this was not a statutory change. If it was a statutory change, we would have used the consent agenda to bring it to you. This is a recommended change by MSBA because there were two attorney general opinions about that particular circumstance. And in Minnesota, my understanding is that attorney general opinions are binding on schools. And so that is the reason for the change in five oh seven. When we take a look at the next one, which is nine oh two, this is district facilities and equipment. This is a policy that we look at annually, and so we just make sure that we're looking at annually. The highlighted change here is in section three C, which is just clarifying that a certificate of insurance may be required by the district to ensure payment for damages and any liability for injuries. These are examples where we might have a very large event that a group is renting a facility for, and we want to make sure that they have a certificate of insurance, should there be some kind of issue. So that was a practice we had had before, but just making it very clear in the policy. That's an example of a change there. Policy nine oh three with the visitor to school district buildings and sites, again, some pretty basic changes. One of which really is is a holdover about clarifying that students who are enrolled in post-secondary enrollment options, they are allowed to use the school facility. We, there are, there were some circumstances, not here, but in some other districts where PSEO students who might have half of their day as PSEO were told they would have to leave the school campus and not be able to use school district technology or use the library, et cetera. This just clarifies that students who are doing PSEO can be on campus and they can use the resources on campus. So it's just making that explicitly clear. And then the final one that we have for first, that is the final one that we have for first reading tonight. I got ahead of myself. So those are the ones that are up for first reading. Again, no action this evening. But these are items that have come through the policy committee. In this case, you'll see in a in a couple of different ways.
Great, thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions or comments on any of the policies? Amy? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Right, we're on to item C, which is the potential twenty twenty-four Northfield High School bond referendum. An update from Superintendent Hellman on the progress so far in our December fourth work session.
Yes, so we have a couple of folks here to support us this evening. So online, I believe, is Sal Bagley from Wold Architects and Engineers. Am I right, Tim? Is she online? It is, okay, there's, all right, I see Sal there. And then also, we are fortunate in the audience, Shelby McQuay, who is with Ellers and Associates, our financial advisors, is here. You've been seeing Jeff Seeley at a number of other meetings. Jeff and Shelby are really the two consultants that we work with from Ellers. So we're going to do our best at every board meeting to have a representative from Wold and a representative from Ellers. And at some point, you'll probably start seeing some representatives from Knutson be here as well, just as questions arise. We want you to have as best in-time information as possible. So we just want to review a couple of items. We're going to review the work session. We're going to review the tour. Four board members took the tour of the new Oatana High School this past Saturday. We'll give a report on that. And then I'll give an update on the timeline as to what we're looking for with the upcoming decision about what, if anything, to put on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-four to address the issues that we have with the facility at Northfield High School. So one week ago tonight, we had a two-hour board work session in the high school media center. At that work session, we really worked through the next part of the process and trying to identify the problems to solve with the facility in Northfield High School. So we took the twenty-two or twenty-three problems that you had identified at the work session. I had made some recommended clustering of those problems under some specific heading areas. By way of example, one of the areas is infrastructure. A problem we're trying to solve is infrastructure, the critical systems at the high school that are at end of life and other needed updates. We shared with you some information around the B three benchmarking system. We showed you some data around R value of the walls in the facility. We talked about what current code is. We referenced the wall facility assessment. We shared with you an energy performance index. We shared with you some existing wall sections to codify and to show you what the R value issues were. We gave an NHS overview map. We looked at Google Earth, if you recall. So we really looked at the entire facility, the infrastructure, and really some of the reactions that I heard board members talk through are really just the continuing challenges with climate and comfort in the building. The real difficulty in having students be able to predict and have them adjust to the kinds of swings in temperature and comfort that are in the building. And how, we're not even really in a place where we can advise students what to where to accommodate. We talk about the continued issue of distance between classrooms, the challenge of deciding and thinking about what are the return on investment for remodeling versus building new? Looking at cost ratios, learning that the HVAC question is more complicated than many people initially thought it might be. These are the kinds of things, really an overall piece to the difficulty, the difficulty of dealing with an older building and just that practicality of, there's probably more lurking than what we even see in terms of the facility's assessment. The second problem area that we looked at was just the general classroom laboratory shop and learning spaces that are antiquated and in need of update. And so we looked at things talking about, again, the challenge of an aging facility and that practicality discussion, same thing as we had in the previous question. A real recognition that there was an initial understanding of how did the task force from twenty twenty-two, how did they rate everything so highly in terms of a need or a priority, and board members reflected that now we see why there are so many things rated as a one or two, because there are a number of priorities that need to be addressed. We talked a bit about the Greenville Park Improvement Template, if you will, thinking about the former building and the kind of natural light and airflow that is in, that was in that building versus the new facility. And while obviously a high school is a much bigger scale, that our community can see the difference between that building that we ended up doing some renovation to and then the new facility as well. And really talked about this notion of preservation that our community, you know, going back a hundred or more years, really has a spirit of preservation. And how does that spirit of preservation that we have heard from over time related to buildings that the school has owned, going all the way back to what is now the White Center, right? That whole discussion about new buildings in the community over time. And what role does that play as a board in thinking about that versus the facility's ability to educate students for their future, not our past? And we talked about the, another problem to solve is activities, spaces, and community access. And just people are very well aware of the lack of athletic space and the desire for athletic space from within the community of which is complicated, I think, to say best. Things about the, do we have adequate performance space? Do we actually have adequate performance space for our plays and concerts, et cetera? And then also some inadequate equipment around, specifically around things in the auditorium, audio and lighting, things that are at the end of their usable life. The final area that we looked at as a problem to solve was safety and security. This is a dilemma. In some cases, you think that a number of exits are plus because people can get out of the building very quickly. But we also know that allows people to potentially get into the building who do not want to be. And for those people who went on the Oatana tour on Saturday, you heard that the late, if you're building something new, the recommendation is not to have that many exits, but it is to be more like our middle school or Greenville Park where the exits are very controlled. And then just discuss that the potential reduction of behavior issues. We're fortunate, we don't have a ton of behavioral issues at Northfield High School, but we know, just talking at the Oatana tour, which we'll reflect on in a minute, on Saturday, in the first couple of months of school, they've seen their discipline, office discipline referrals reduced by seventy percent. Seventy percent, and a lot of that, they they attribute to sightlines, just something different, a different environment for students. So those are the problems that we looked at attempting to solve. The next part that I would like to open up to those of you who came on the Oatana tour, we did a tour Oatana on Saturday. My count was nineteen Northfield School District residents attended the tour. We had about a two-hour tour in the facility. We're very grateful to Oatana Superintendent Jeff Alsted for giving his time to us. I'm fairly certain that pre-dinner is coming his way here in the next month or so from someone at this table. But he gave us that tour. It was really great for people to see. So I would open for people who are able to attend the tour. If you'd like to share your reactions to that facility with the board, I'd be happy to open. I can give my thoughts too, but I think it's more powerful coming from board members who were on the tour.
Ben?
Yeah, happy to jump in. And Matt, I would add to the work session from last weekend, we were talking about you know, how does the space sort of impact learning and the the learning experience? And I think that was made clear to me, you know, the potential for that in visiting the Oatana High School. So, you know, I think if people are listening or watching later, if you have a chance to make it to that facility for a sporting event or something else in the community, and there may be some more tours, I don't know if those, we'll see. But if there are, I would certainly encourage people to get down there because for me, it helps frame that question. You know, sometimes it helps to see the solutions, know what the right questions to ask and in seeing that building in particular, it made me appreciate how thoughtful, purpose-built space allows you to educate in a different way. And what we heard, I think, were stories about how the community engaged in the building and development of that space for specific outcomes. So for, you know, partnership and developing nurses so that somebody can come out of Oatana High School with, you know, almost a full LPN and, you know, enter the workforce, if that's something that's interesting to them, or other areas, agriculture, you know, you know, the industrial, lack in the term STEM. So thinking about what those spaces, because they've been designed for those learning outcomes, really get you, you know, and I think, again, you, it was hard for me to envision sort of that difference until you saw it. And then you really appreciate when you see it. So there are many nice things to talk about in terms of what we saw on that site. But for me, that ties back to one of the problems we're trying to solve from our discussion at the board workshop last week. I can say more, but I'll pause and let some of my other board members who were there reflect on what they saw as well.
Thank you, Ben. Very well said. Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. I just have to say that I was really surprised. On the tour, I was expecting more information about, you know, the the structural parts of the building and the materials that were used, you know, numbers and that type of thing, at which we received some of that, but I was more surprised and enlightened about the information that we received that connects, connected the students to the building. So there's features and functions of a, you know, physical building, sure, but we were kind of shown, we could actually see how that connects to students. And then we we could almost see too the outcomes of what that could be and imagining what that could be for our own students. For me, was probably the most enlightening part. Every room, every hallway that we went into really had a very direct function, it seemed to the students and the staff and just seemed like it connected everybody and gave everyone sort of something to sort of hope or you know, just overwhelmingly good feeling of being in that room or that those facilities. So, I mean, right, as soon as you walk in, I received that feeling and it's just very different from our buildings, of course, because it's new. But I really wanted to stress those certain functions and features that we're lacking here that I think we really need to concentrate on. So if if you haven't taken a look at the Oatana High School, I highly suggest at least going maybe online. You can find some pictures, maybe a virtual tour to also kind of get on the same page as as us who have seen it.
Very nice. Thank you, Jenny. Jeff, did you want to add anything?
First of all, on the Oatana tour, I mean, very impressive, very impressive. And I think that over the years, we've always used the term cutting edge and bleeding edge. And it's usually when we're talking about bigger districts and the idea behind cutting edge and bleeding edge is to go copy some other districts and see, let 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 them kind of clear the path and see what the trail looks like, and then we can kind of learn from that and go back. And I think that just a very impressive of what they've done down there with community support was also mentioned that community support was also mentioned that a local company federated, gave twenty-two million. And it was like six or eight million from other companies, plus a lot of people, just really a lot of collaboration on that, on that building. And I think that that kind of sets the stage a little bit for what is the Northfield solution? And, and, you know, we can take bits and pieces out of that and, and do the best we can with what we end up with. And then also going back on the work session. Kind of, you know, one of my main takeaways with that is that the Hy-Vac system is very complex. It's a lot more complicated than I thought. And I, I think that also another thing that really opened my eyes a little bit on the work session was once you start going into the, to the wings, each wing, and then you start opening up, you know, the building. All of a sudden, a lot of the, the old codes go out the window, which really kind of changes the whole landscape and it really makes your, your costs kind of hard to, to, to control in a sense. So that's an added dimension that just adds a little bit more complexity to it. But so anyway, those are a couple of my comments.
Thank you, Jeff. Amy, I know you've toured the building as well at another time. Do you have any comments?
Well, I was so impressed with the building and how they really worked with making it an inviting place for students to learn. And that's, I was really happy. I, I went around and just took pictures of different ideas, hoping that we would be able to include some of those ideas and whatever we decide to come up with. Thank you.
I think for me, the, the thing that spoke loudly was hearing Superintendent Jeff talk about some of the same problems that their building had that our building has. He talked about the windows and the walls, insulation and the temperature controls. And then hearing him articulate that, that the remodel versus new, you know, for the made a, made a, made sense to build new. Also appreciated the intentionality that you were describing, Ben. Students studying a particular subject like nursing or sitting in a class, watching a veterinarian do treatment on, on a, you know, sick animal, that these students then can go right out into the workforce, having been exposed in high school. And maybe even gained the skills that was described, almost getting an LPN. So very exciting and appreciate all the work and effort that you put into getting us there and thankful for the community members who showed up.
And I, I do want to encourage, we will see about the possibility of another tour. I think the key part is that we always have to remember that we see things, I've talked to you about a lot, this a lot with statewide context or national context. When we see stories about education and, you know, a story that talks about a particular educational issue across the entire country or something across an entire state, I encourage us to bring it back to the local context. And I would say the same thing here. The Owatonna building is incredibly well done. World Architects, you know, who were the, the consultants on that just did a masterful job, just like they did on our Greenville Park School. And that is what Owatonna needs. Now it gives us some ideas, as Amy said, it gives us some ideas, it gives us some things to think about. We need to continue as our own community to determine what is the right pathway forward. So is the, is part of what we learned at Owatonna something that certainly could be applied here? Absolutely. But we are different communities, we have different tax bases, we have different industrial partners, we have a different community in general, and our pathway will be different, right? Can we learn from what Owatonna did? Absolutely. Are there a lot of things that we can pull in? As Claudia said and Jenny said, there are a lot of similarities to the problems that we are trying to solve, to the problems that they solved. So I encourage us when we get that kind of information to be able to take it and say, okay, what can we learn and apply it to our context, not just make it our context, if that makes sense? Because I do think that there are some folks, rightfully so. When you go and visit for a basketball game at Owatonna or a volleyball game, you're going to come back and say, we should have that. And maybe that is what we should have, but ours needs to be slightly different because we have to adjust, that's what is needed here in Northfield. So it's a great tour for us to be able to see what is possible. And we have a number of very solid options as we move ahead. So just really appreciate people, the folks who took the time to come with us. Again, about nineteen people who showed up down there and that was great. If we have additional interest, I'd be happy to schedule another tour. I think Ben might have had another couple of comments.
Okay, Ben.
Yeah, I was just going to add on, I think, you know, what you're saying, Matt, and that that's one of the things that I appreciated was, you know, how Owatonna as a community approached the problem, you know, they had a high school from nineteen twenty-one and had had several failed referendum. Ahead of that, you know, I think they took a step back and found both, I think, participatory and financial support in the community to make that a reality for them, you know, for a model that works. And I think that, you know, certainly there's learning there. For me too, it's, we think about schools sometimes, or at least I think I think about schools sometimes as finite in their purpose. You know, it's a high school, that's where high school students go to get educated. If we take a step back, I think what the tour of Owatonna showed us was that it's really a community asset. You know, you've got this building that's in use seven days a week by the community, not just, you know, to educate high school students. But auditoriums that are used for a variety of different purposes, athletic facilities that are used for a variety of different purposes. So knowing that, I think, or viewing it through that lens was helpful for me. And, you know, kind of helps me frame my thinking in terms of this discussion. So thank you for allowing me to.
Thank you so much for your comments. Corey or Noel, if you have any thoughts or comments, I welcome you to participate.
And I, I do want, we do have Sal here and we do have Shelby here. So board members had asked, just to close this, that they had asked if could we have some numbers, you know, by tonight? We, we couldn't have numbers by tonight from last, we, we did visit with Sal last week to start ideating some potential pathways. And Wold will start putting some of those estimates together with Knutson. And then as we get further down that road, based on what we heard from board members' interest in what kinds of things should we model, if you will? Then LRS will help us, but we are going to have these folks here at every meeting. And if you have questions for them, great, and if you don't, that's okay too. But what we want to do is make sure that our experts are with us, what, you know, in between the work sessions, so that if people have questions. So is it appropriate to allow, and it's okay if you don't, but we want to just make sure that our experts are here at every meeting with us to help us with these.
Okay, would either of you like to present anything or do you want to just open to comments or questions from the board members?
I don't have any specific presentations, no. Dr. Hillman is correct, we are going to be meeting several times with Knutson over the next couple of weeks to prepare some of these potential ways of addressing the problems that Dr. Hillman went over with you all in built form, and there's a range of different ways that that could be done. If anyone has anything that they would like us to enter into the space, please either let us know tonight or you can send it through Dr. Hillman. You know, things that you want to know what this costs or what that costs. Whether that's a specific component or maybe a specific solution. As we would like to spend the month of January preparing that information so that your time in the new year is productive. Because if you don't know, or if it's your first time going through it, we really have to feed essentially project costs to Lers for them to then be able to turn around a tax impact. So our work is in tandem.
Okay, thank you, Sal. Dr. Hillman, did you have a comment?
No, I have one more item after we, any more questions or comments for Sal or for Shelby?
Anybody have a question for Sal or Shelby?
And we recognize that some meetings, there will be lots of questions, other meetings there won't, that's okay. The last thing I had was around the timeline.
Okay, yes.
So I just wanted to highlight that we are targeting, so in the timeline, we had identified sometime in January to have a public meeting. And remember, we talked about highlighting the public meeting as similar to what we had with the budget process. Right now, we have one planned. If we see that we need more than one, one thing that we will do at this meeting is, well, we're going to work on seeking childcare and be able to have some ability to help folks to be able to break down barriers for them to get to that meeting. We're targeting right now, January twenty-ninth is the date that it looks like would be the best for a public meeting. Then board members had also asked about a, another work session in January. The dates that we're targeting are either January sixteenth or January eighteenth, that's a Tuesday or Thursday. And we'll poll board members this week to find out which of those days would be best for you. So we're going to do the best that we can to get, we, our idea is that you have that work session. We are starting, the, the phone survey will start to be going. We'll have that public meeting, hopefully by the end of January, enough people in the community will have seen and heard there's going to be up another two tours. We have another tour tomorrow night, remind you of Northfield High School, six to eight o'clock tomorrow night. So adding that one work session that week, January sixteenth through eighteenth. And then right now, targeting that one public meeting in January, we can certainly schedule another public meeting if we need to. I would recommend that we do that in February, should we need to do that. But this is where we're at with the timeline and I just wanted to make sure this was on people's radar. The month of January is very difficult and that twenty-ninth being a fifth Monday. I know many board members set aside Mondays because of board business. So we're hopeful that that would work for you. And if it can't, if you could just let Anita know as promptly as possible, that would allow us to get all of these things on the calendar. So we want to keep moving the ball down the field, so to speak, in terms of this process. For people who are watching tonight, please tell your friends and neighbors to get involved. We want to hear from people before the board tries to decide what it's going to put, if anything, on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-four. We'd rather have that discussion before a decision is made, rather than after a decision is made. I also want board members to know, initially, we have said that our goal was to finish the process and make a decision about what would be on the ballot by the end of February. I do know that at least one board member cannot be at that second meeting in February. And so rather than accelerating the process and having, you know, some kind of decision before, I just want board members to know it is probable that we may not take a vote or ask for a vote until that meeting in March, that March, I think it's March eleventh is what I think it is. So we're still, that's a possibility, we're still trying to target, can we make it happen by the end of February? I just know we have one board member who will be gone. And this is a very important, obviously very important piece for the community. So we're just trying to navigate, we understand that things come up after we publish a timeline. But we're trying to be responsive to you, try to keep us on track so that we are able to hit those targets that we've been looking at and route to a, a potential election in November. So that's on the timeline and be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thanks Claudia. I'm just looking for more of a clarification. You had mentioned that, of course, you, you couldn't get us any pricing for tonight. It was, you know, you didn't have enough time. So I'm wondering where we're at with the pricing. So I know Sal mentioned that, you know, they, they might need some information from us or from you. And then put together packages and then get together with Knutson in order to get that pricing, because, I mean, they, they need information and direction and, and the types of packages that they're going to be pricing out. So can you just kind of clarify where we're at with that?
And I'll have Sal, if Sal could come off of mute as well.
Yeah.
So Val and I and Justin and Josh Cooper from Knutson and Sal have been talking and discussing, including Shane Byer. Hearing from board members, what you had started to talk about and ideating those different components of packages that we have heard you thinking about. And so Sal, do you want to talk about how you.
Yeah. Sure, absolutely. And I think this came from a direction from, I think it, Corey, I think it was you asking kind of, can you, can you repress that maybe the moment we came to last year? And so, you know, last year, the board pondered a few different scenarios. One of those was a, a maintenance forward approach or maybe a, a almost entirely maintenance approach. And so that would be the lion's share, that effort would be us taking our facility assessment and recommending budgets based on a November twenty-four election, which would be twenty twenty-five bidding. So we have to do some forecasting of the bid climate at that time. And potentially adding furniture. So that's kind of one scenario that we are working on process meeting for. Probably the simplest and cleanest, it's really just escalating and making sure that budgets are appropriate. Then there is an option that was a lot, talked about quite a bit last year, which was, I always called it the reimagining option. But that's kind of the renovate parts of the building and maybe reconstruct other parts of the building. And that can, that option can vary significantly. But I think there was some coalescence around what would be included and not included. And so that's one of the things we talked through last week of, you know, assumptions of, you know, is the capacity still to hold? You know, fourteen hundred students, for example, things of that nature. So I had a whole list of questions for last week for what that option should and should not include. And we'll, before things are finalized, of course, you all will get to see some of that. And then, of course, I think I got asked a couple of different times, you know, what would a new building cost? And that actually is kind of a two-pronged thing. Well, maybe more than, more prongs than that, there's two clear paths there. One is a new building on your current site. As opposed to a new building on a different site. And those would have different costs mostly in the realm of land acquisition and development and utilities. And so both of those were, are under preparation. And then there's some nuances to even when you say, you know, how much does a new building cost? Kind of my question, I turned around and asked the group last week was, what, what's a new building include, right? There's no such thing as a high school off the shelf. And so there's a lot of assumptions to be made around, you know, which, I don't know, how many courts in an activity center is the game gym, the same space or a different space? How many bleachers should there be seated? In a new building on a new site, how much should the stadium seat? Is there artificial turf anywhere? And so I had just this long, long list of questions that eventually the board will need to ponder. But we need to have some sort of answer to be able to even start throwing numbers around. And then once I think you start to coalesce around a solution, then of course, we would want to make sure you all knew what those assumptions were. So that's really why we need some time to work on it is it's not just as simple as saying, oh, it costs blank million dollars. There's a lot of thoughts.
And so I think the key thing there is that, you know, we went through a list of a common items that you would ask about in a new high school, for that example. And those are modular, right? So we have a starting point in which Wold is starting to look at and starting to ideate the costing. And then, of course, if, when we bring that to the board and you say, okay, that sounds right, but let's estimate it with this instead. We then are at a point where we can pull out one estimate and plug in another one, if that makes sense. So we're trying to get as much of that work done upfront so that as we continue that dialogue, if that is a route we want to go, that we have the ability to do some adjustment of those variables for you. Is that helpful?
Yes, and thank you, Sal. And, and I know, and Sal just mentioned that they, they would have questions, of course, to obtain from us regarding any new build or new construction before they're able to come up with any, any pricing at all. Is it, would it be possible that we would obtain, that we can obtain that list to take a look at?
Just the list of type of questions that I have.
Yes, for specifications for a new.
Sure, so what, the best document that I would say for a new building to have a discussion about is something that's called a space summary. And so what it really does is it lays out kind of every room in a building and then the quantity assumptions and the size assumptions. And so there are some things that I don't need to ask a lot of questions around. When you tell me to design the building for a certain number of students, I, that really helps me size things like the kitchen and the cafeteria pretty easily. But then there's, you know, a lot of open-endedness into, you know, the size of activities and athletic space, size of a potential auditorium, things like that, right? What do you want for seating capacity? And so I would be more than happy to forward that information along. So based on what I heard last week and what I know of our work in the district in twenty twenty-two, we already kind of had a space summary started, but I always think it's healthy to revisit assumptions, right? A year has gone by and so the short answer is yes, I'd be more than happy to forward that on, but that's kind of the context.
Yeah, and once I get that, I can forward that on to board members so that they are able to see the kinds of things that Wold is looking at to try to help determine what the estimate is. And then, you know, that can also be part of our work session in January as well.
I have one more thought, Dr. Hillman, if that's okay. Something, there is a less room by room version of planning that is sometimes utilized. And that would be that it is probably gets you in the right realm of possibility to start using the Department of Education's space guidelines. So the MDE has a, something that's called the School Planning and Construction Guide. And they do have recommended square footage per student ranges. And so for a high school of your size, I believe the range is a hundred and eighty to two hundred square foot per student. And so, you know, short of going through what I called the space summary and kind of talking about every room and how big it should be and what it needs to hold, you can get pretty close by estimating off of those types of ranges. They are pretty careful to say, if you go to that, if you just Google it, you'll find it. But that things like pools and auditoriums and larger. But that things like pools and auditoriums and larger activity centers slash field houses would kind of be above and beyond those square footages, those are kind of more core ranges. And so, you, you can kind of start to garner how big a building should be from those. But my recommendation is that, once you start putting cost opinions out into the public sphere, people really latch on to them. And so, I fear using just those kind of genericized versions, just because somebody will say, well, at the, at the work session in January, you said it was this much, and now you're telling me it's this much, right? So I, that's why we're kind of take, trying to take our time a little bit.
It seems like it would be very true, so I get it. But I, I think that it would just be really helpful to have as much as we can have before the next work session, so that we can kind of collaborate easier to rule things out faster. That makes sense?
It's not a problem, it's part of the natural process, right? Remember that in our I-Rod documents, they were using the first time was, what was the information about the problem? And we're moving to reactions, and now we are at options, and the things that you're asking are, what are the options that we should consider? So it's the natural next step.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else comment or question? Amy, you good? Okay, great, right, thank you everyone. Let's see, we are on item six, the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Cory, second by Ben. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. All right, items for individual action. First, we have the 2024-2025 school year calendar. Superintendent Hillman will present the proposed 24-25 school year calendar. And I will take a motion first, and then we will discuss. Is there a motion to approve the proposed 24-25 school year calendar with updates? Moved by Jenny, by Ben, thank you. Dr. Hillman, will you update us?
Yeah, so Tim, I've got the calendar pulled up on my computer, so if you can switch to that, please. So there's very little change between this proposed calendar and the one that you saw previously, late October, early November. The key thing, one of the things that we've heard from some staff and from some families is, we have been working to modernize the way that we communicate with families. So we had moved from having a scheduled parent-teacher conferences during the year to more of an ongoing, seeking an ongoing conversation about student performance. And that has highlighted itself in a variety of ways at the elementary schools. More of a window of time when there were some formal conferences that people could choose to do via telephone in person or via Zoom. Our family conferences at the beginning of the year are a key part of that. But we've gotten feedback, parent survey, staff surveys, about the need to have some, maybe not the same amount as we had before, scheduled parent-teacher conferences during the year. In order to be able to get some time, we have to find days that are on the calendar, because we have 187 day teacher work calendar. To find a day or some days to be able to get those hours off calendar and scheduled in the evening. So in working through this, what we are proposing, again, what I shared with you the last time, the first day of school, the last day of school, graduation, all of the breaks exactly the same. The only difference is, the pre-service workshop schedule and the previous version went all the way through August 30th, that last Friday in August. What we're doing is backing that up, that the last day of the pre-service teacher workshop would be August 29th. To get those eight hours, we took half a day from family conferences. So instead of family conferences being two full days, they would be a day and a half. And for the vast majority of the district, the NCEC is a little bit of a different conversation. We are able to accomplish those family conferences in a day and a half. We would take a half a day from staff development to be able to get that day. Then what happens is, we would take those eight hours and they'd be distributed for evening parent, scheduled parent-teacher conferences throughout the year, some in the fall, some in the spring. Each site, each, each level, each grade level band would then work to what is the best plan for them. But we, this really responds to feedback that we've gotten. We know that the new approaches that we are trying to use are really resonating with a lot of people. But we also know that there are folks who just prefer to say, I can come to the school on this day, and all of the teachers are in the cafeteria, and I can catch the ones whom I need. And I'm able to do that, that way, or at the elementary school, I know I'm able to meet with both the special education teacher and the general education teacher. The eight hours will not be enough to accommodate everyone, obviously, throughout the year. But we think it will be able to accommodate the people who want that in-person scheduled experience. Of course, people can request a conference at any time. We, in fact, one of the things we dislike about the scheduled parent-teacher conferences is that it sometimes has people thinking, oh, I'll wait till conferences if they have a concern with their child. We don't want to wait till conferences, right? If you have a concern for your child, we want you to contact us now, so we can have that discussion in the moment and adjust courses necessary. But we also know that there is a place for those, and this is the way that we are able to accomplish and try to meet everyone in the middle of where they are all at at this point. So a pretty minor change, this is the latest that we have waited to approve a school calendar in some time. The typical practice until four or five years ago was, we wouldn't approve the next year's academic calendar till January or sometimes February. We then got it to where we were approving calendars a full year ahead of time. We had feedback from people that they had to bid their vacation so far in advance, and knowing when the spring break was or other breaks were, were important to them. This year, we did wait, because we wanted to see what the outcome of the legislature was. And we wanted to be able to hear from families, how is this, what, we knew this is still a question, we wanted to hear, was it still a question for people? It clearly is, and this is a way that we can solve it. So we're asking for your approval of the 24-25 calendar this evening.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Hillman? Jenny?
Okay, I just have more of a technical question, as you talk about the history of, of creating the calendar. How, how do you arrive at the student, the amount, the number of student contact days? Because the state statute is 165 contact days. And then, how do you arrive at your number?
So that's a great question. So we start with the number of days that are required by the contract. So you're right, there's a minimum number of student days from the state, but we also have a teacher contract that has a 187-day calendar. In that calendar, it also, or in that contract, it also says that there will be seven teacher preparation days or teacher workdays. So that comes right off the top. Then, a lot of it is history. So for a long time, up until I would say 2009, nine, 10, the district had had 173 student contact days, that was the tradition. I don't know the history of why people chose that. Don't know when it was, I just know traditionally, it was 173 student contact days. In 2009, we increased it to 174 teacher contract days. And then, when we went to the family conferences during the pandemic, we did the pre, before the school year family conferences. And we had a lot of really good feedback on that, that people really liked that opportunity to come in and meet with teachers ahead of time, get to see the school ahead of time, get to connect with their student's schedule at the secondary building. And in order to make that permanent, as we moved ahead, we did, the board did choose to say, we'll take one student contact day, and we also took a teacher preparation day or a teacher conference day at that time, to be able to get those two full days at the beginning. So it had been 100, I don't know when we got to 173, it's been the tradition. And then, you can, same for the length of the school day, right? Our length of our school day is one of the longer in the Big Nine Conference, again, tradition. We've made a change in 2009, 10, around that time, and then a change just a couple of years ago for family conferences. So the 187 days is what drives our contract, the seven teacher preparation days are things that were required by the contract to make happen. We could go all the way down to 165 days, as you said, that's the state minimum. Got very little room there, you know, if you, there are, so I don't know of a ton of districts that are 165. I know that some that are not too far above that, but I'm not aware of anybody who's at 165 total. Is that helpful?
Anyone else question or comment? Amy, do you have a question or comment?
No. I'm good.
Thank you. All right, Anita, will you help facilitate a roll call?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Next is a policy recommendation, the board is requested to adopt policy 207 as presented. Is there a motion to adopt policy 207? Okay, moved by Cory, second. By Ben? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Anita, will you facilitate the roll call vote?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller? Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Item C is to certify the final 2023 payable 2024 tax levy. This action completes the school district's process that began in September with the preliminary levy certification to the Rice, Dakota and Good Hugh Counties and the Minnesota Department of Education. This levy payable in 24, 2024 will be a component of the 24-25 fiscal budget. Is there a motion to certify to county auditors the 2023 payable 2024 final certified levy limitation and certification report in the amount of $21,946,253.35, which represents a 3.84% increase from the prior year? Moved by Jenny, second. By Ben, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? It's seeing none, Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller? Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Thank you, motion passes. Item D is our fiscal year 2023-2024 general budget revision. The board is asked to approve the revisions for the fiscal year 24 general budget as presented in this meeting, I'll take a motion and then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve the revised 23-24 general fund budget of revenues of $62,956,616 and expenditures of $62,17588? Okay, moved by Ben, second. By Cory, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board members? Seeing none, Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, thank you, motion passes. Item E is our final item, and it is the approval of the bid for district iPad purchases. We do have a final bid recommendation in the table file. The board is requested to approve the bid for the purchase of the district's iPads. Is there a motion to approve the bid for purchase of the district's iPads as recommended by Director Knutson and Director Murdestorff? Moved by Ben, second. Jenny, thank you, are there any questions or comments? Hey Ben?
Anita's got something she wants to clarify?
And so there was already a motion made in a second, what, is that fine to? Okay, so the amended motion would be to approve the sale of approximately 3,806 generation district-owned iPads to Electronic Deals Inc. at a guaranteed price of $363,090. It's, do you want to? So, okay, okay, moved by Ben, second. By Jenny, okay, thank you Anita.
Val wants to make any comments about the bidding?
Sure. Did I just shut it off, or is it on?
You're on.
Okay. Um, so we had 16 bids, which was excellent. You can see the summary on the sheet that was included in the table file. The range was pretty wide, but we did do this slightly differently than we had done two years prior. There is an option for like a grading service that ended up being very complicated, and it was really difficult to estimate who really was gonna be the highest bidder based on that, because that was very subjective. So we did it a little more straightforward, and we're pleasantly surprised with the results. So the bid documents have it that everything will be completed by the end of January. So we were overall very happy.
Very good, thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Ben?
Just a quick question in the table file there, and help me with the math. But there's unit price, and sometimes the unit price is higher than the guaranteed price, so is that just a function of like what works and what doesn't?
I'm not 100% sure, to be real honest. We had that listed on our form, and for several of them, they matched, and for others, they didn't. And so, I don't know if there was thoughts about doing a per unit, if we were gonna split them out, or, you know, that sort of thing. But the bid document very clearly articulated that we were going to award it based on the guaranteed minimum. So, yeah, I don't, don't have a good explanation for that.
We went with the highest guaranteed.
Yes, yep, that is what.
Yeah, and I think the key thing is, the bottom line is that when we do this, there are people who say, well, I'd like to have X amount of the 3,800, or the 3, you know, we're not doing that, we're saying you buy it all, or you buy none of it. And so that's where it is, you will have people who will, we had a place for the unit price, but the guaranteed price is the part that we are making the judgment on.
Good, anyone else question or comment? Very good, thank you. Okay, Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Very nice, motion passes. Right, item nine is our items for information, and we have an enrollment report. Dr. Hillman, will you update us?
Yes, you'll see the December enrollment report is in the packet. And you'll see that we are just about what we were, a little bit, three students more last month than this month. But we're still at that 16, we're up 16 over projection at this point. So you'll see those differences in the enrollment report, and we're pleased to be above the projection at this point.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, item 10 is our future meetings and two workshop nights, Wednesday and Thursday, December 20 and 21, 5:30 PM, MSBA Phase 3 training will be conducted on those two evenings. Monday, January 8, 6 PM, we'll have our organizational board meeting, followed by a regular board meeting, and that'll be here in the boardroom. Monday, January 22nd, 6 PM, another regular board meeting, also here in the boardroom. That is all the business that we have for tonight, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Noel, second. By Jen? Anita?
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez George?
Aye.
Miller? Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, very good, we're adjourned. Thanks all.